Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting. This is Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. It is 6:30 PM. We are reconvening from a closed session that we began at 6 o'clock. And, Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item on the agenda. It was discussed, but there was no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. If everyone will rise, remove your hats and join us in the invocation by Pastor Darren Hunt.
Let us pray. Dear God, tonight we gather in these chambers to once again conduct the business of this great city of Lompoc. Thank you for the freedoms and the democratic process we enjoy as people of the greatest nation on this earth you have created. God, as we gather, our hearts are heavy for those beginning the rebuilding process after Hurricane Harvey devastated many communities in Texas and Louisiana. Comfort those who have lost homes, possessions, and worst of all, neighbors, friends, and family members. Protect and bless them, and those coming to their aid in this process. Many of us have helped in some way or another, but tonight, God, we also join our hearts in prayer for them and for those now in the Caribbean Islands and even Florida that are bracing for another terrible hurricane. God be with our firefighters who are battling blazes up and down our state, and please remind us of what we see in all these tragedies, that we are all human and we really do care for one another and want the best for each other. The best of humanity seems to rise to the occasion to go to bat for the downtrodden and crisis-stricken, because when we strip down all of our differences, peel away the issues that want to divide us in this nation, and even in our city, we are all the same. We desire life, love, and the pursuit of happiness. God help this council tonight and in the weeks and months to come as they seek to balance a budget and make wise decisions regarding legislation. God help them to keep the good of the entire city in mind, since their decisions will not just affect a few, but all of the men, women, and children of our city. Help our leaders to do what is right and not simply what is easy. Help them do good, even in the face of opposition and personal opinions. Give them wisdom and help them be the leaders you have called them to be. Bless our police and firefighters as they protect our city. Bless every public servant who seeks to serve the citizens of our city well. Thank you for all the many agencies, organizations, churches, and businesses that work hard to better our community. We ask you to bless them. And God bless as well the schools and students alike as they are back to another year of growth and development. Thank you, God, for your care and for hearing our prayers, in our Lord's name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing. Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, I'm going to be making a presentation of a proclamation to... It's in honor of Constitution Week and it's Daughters of the American Revolution. Do we have someone here?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. Ah, we can get someone to grab the picture. Okay, this lady's going to grab the picture for you. Okay, hi, how are you doing?
Hi, thank you.
What's your name?
Nancy Thompson.
Nancy Thompson, okay. So this is a proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in the republic dedicated to rule by law. Whereas September 17th, 2017, marks the 213th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable... On this memorable anniversary and to patriotic and patriotic celebration which will commence, whereas, is a privilege and duty of every American people to commemorate the 213th anniversary of this drafting of the Constitution of the United States with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Now therefore, I bobblego, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2017, as Constitution Week in the City of Lompoc, and we urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege provides. And congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Just comment. I passed out some buttons as everyone came in, and if you didn't receive any one, I'll be happy to have you one back there. And we will be working with high school students and presenting copies of the Constitution later this month. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and now we're going to hear from a representative of Union Pacific Railroad. He'll give us a brief presentation on scheduled maintenance work on the railroad tracks going throughout our city.
Hi, Mayor, council members. I'd just like to introduce Lupe Valdez from the Union Pacific Railroad.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members, and community members as well. My name is Lupe Valdez, and I work for Union Pacific Railroad here in Southern California. We are probably doing a project that's long, long overdue in the city, and we are doing a rehab project for the rail... Parts of the rail that run on Laurel. As you probably may have passed by earlier today, we closed the street this morning, and we are rehabbing the rail, pulling the old rail out that's probably been there, oh, I would say more than 50 to 60 years, maybe more. So we're going to be replacing that rail, replacing the track where that rail runs on, and also replacing several crossings. So we're doing all the crossings in between so that they'll be better for the cars to go over. There will also be where the yellow lines are now on Laurel, and this is just between E and H on Laurel, where the yellow lines are now, we want to create a berm. We've had situations where people decide to park on the tracks, and that's probably the most unsafe situation you could have. Even though the train goes 10 miles an hour, it doesn't go super fast, you still do not want to have an incident as we had of, I want to say, last month, a month and a half ago, that someone drove into a train. We want to try to avoid that as much as possible. We're also going to be redoing two other crossings, and that is, we're going to be redoing H Street. That one, though, involves Caltrans, and we need to get a permit from Caltrans, which is underway, but we have to work through with Caltrans and with the city to make sure we get that permit on H Street and the railroad track. And then we're doing the crossing at A Street and Chestnut. We're redoing that whole intersection. Once we know the dates, in terms of solidify all the dates with all the permits in hand, then we'll let the people around that know. For Laurel, I personally walked up and down the streets, talking to people. Most folks were happy that we were doing it. And we work through deliveries. If anyone... Only one of the companies really has heavy-duty truck deliveries, and so we need to make special accommodations to make sure their trucks can get in and out safely, and so we did that. So we're working with the businesses that had... Everyone else was okay in terms of deliveries and being able to use the alleys to access, including the market, the donut shop, the furniture place, and a few of the other companies on the other side of the street that I talked to. And then we also left flyers at residential streets just so they knew they wouldn't be able to access Laurel for between the 5th through the 19th. We are hoping to finish sooner, but right now that's the timeframe that we have, the closure, the complete closure. With that, I also want to tell you I really appreciate your staff's help, both with Michael Luther and Samantha Skrogan, who were able to get out the media advisory on this activity. So I really, truly appreciate that, and I am open to any questions that you might have.
Well, first of all, I want to really thank you for being here. And I know you're just a messenger, so we're not going to... Because it has been... It's way overdue, you're right.
Yes.
Way overdue.
Right.
And many of us, along with citizens, had been trying to make contact, asking something to get done, and finally it is, so we're happy. So I want to thank you for being here, and, gosh, it's going to be a new driving experience. We've had people with broken shocks.
Understood.
Broken front end struts, everything else, so, anyway, it's a pleasure that you're here. Anyone else from the council? Councilman Starbuck?
Future projects here?
Right now, this is the... We normally calendar our projects on a yearly basis from January to... Our fiscal year is January to December, so this is the one for this fiscal year. If we can get through the two crossings, then we can do more projects hopefully next year. It all depends. Each year we revisit the situation. Right now, I'll be honest with you, with what's happened in Texas, all of our resources, I mean, we're kind of redoing a whole number of resources now in Texas because we were washed out in so many places in Texas. So I think next year is going to be really reconstructing parts of Texas and all the train tracks that we lost out there. We're starting to get back, but there's still places we can't access, either because of water or because of chemical plants. And so right now, the focus, I think, is going to shift a little bit toward Texas just because of the rebuilding process that we have to do there in the state.
Anyone else? Well, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we look forward to brand-new tracks.
Thank you. All right, take care.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to... If you'll remember, at our budget meeting on August 22nd, during the course of the discussion on the budget, I was asked a question about a particular situation involving a particular employee in a particular position, and I declined to answer. In the course of my offering, my unwillingness to answer, upon reflection, I'm... And looking back at the tape, I'm not satisfied with myself, certainly with the tone that might have been perceived from my refusing to answer, and so I wanted to apologize to Councilmember Vega. I certainly meant no disrespect, and it was not my intent to offer any disrespect. I was merely trying to end the conversation, but nonetheless, that's no excuse for the tone that I may have used, and it was certainly not the tone that I would want to give as an example to my colleagues to use. So if I just ask Councilmember Vega for his forgiveness on that, and just wanted to get my apology on the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, Mosby.
I don't know if the city attorney's able to answer this, but is... Would that happen that night? Were you able to review the tape as all?
Yes, I was.
In reviewing the situation, I know it was a touchy situation and such. I don't know if you're able to answer it. Was the city manager acting insubordinate in that issue?
I'm going to answer that like a real attorney. That is a very legal conclusionary word to use that has a lot of implications, and I wouldn't want to try to address something like that in open session because of the possibility of what that could mean.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, public comment. This year, you need to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything that can come before this council. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment and go to consent calendar. Consent calendar... Before I go to that, I just want to remind everyone, if you have not already done so, please turn off any cell phones, electronic devices that could make noise during our meeting. Okay, consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of items that are generally considered routine and will be passed with one motion, a second, and a vote by the council unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Is there any item that a council member chooses to pull? Councilman Mosby.
Maybe a quick answer on the number six, and that is the impact fee.
Okay.
That would be Mr. Wilkey.
Mr. Wilkey here? Oh, here we go.
We've had some discussion about some of the impact fees. And of course, the one that I've had issue with is the street impact fee, and I understand that what we're doing here is a compliance report and just showing that you got your numbers written in your ones... One plus one equals two through here. When is it time to reevaluate these independently and see if what we're doing is...
The budget for 1719 has contemplated, because of the CIP, to do an impact fee study.
So at that time, that would... When we bring it forward with more movement?
Well, it would be reevaluated from all aspects, so...
Okay.
The types, the... What we don't have and what we do have that may be different. So that's not... The fact that it's in the budget, it still needs to come to council for approval, which it has actually probably three times since I've been here, and it's not been acted upon, so I would hope it would go forward.
I asked questions about it, and said it was going to be brought backwards after with the budget, so I mean, in that aspect.
Well, it presumes that the CIP is approved as part of the budget, and the CIP is the guiding document for how to determine what's in that... What's going to be studied in the new study, so...
Okay, well, that'll bring me to another question about the budget then on that, because I was led to believe that the CIP would be brought back at another time. The capital improvement plan not being approved when we approve this budget. So I'll bring that back, but you answered my question about the impact fees. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Okay, so with that, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move to accept the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, this brings us on to a staff presentation. First staff presentation is by Management Services, an update on the financial management system. And who will be present? Mr. Wilkey.
That's me. I'm filling in for Linda today, and just like I did last time. Council members?
Mr. Wilkey, if you can, just so the public, remind everyone what...
I will. So one of the things that the council asked the finance division to do when it approved the implementation of our new financial management system, which is replacing a 30-plus-year-old system that we use for writing checks, producing purchase orders, keeping track of our financials, keeping track of our balance sheets, our income statements, all that kind of stuff, all those items that help us prepare and record and track and manage our financial aspect of the city, is in a system that we've been using since around 1984. So it's well past its due date, and we've been working on a project to get a revision to that since probably October of '14. We entered into our contract with Tyler Systems to do the full replacement, so we'll have an online version that's at least in the 20th century, if not the 21st century compared to what we have, which is pre-2000 Y2K issues. So we're getting very close to implementing the first phase of our four-phase project, which is the basic financials for the underlying foundation of the whole entire project, which is the general ledger, getting the system to allow for checks to be processed, to purchase orders to be generated, requisitions to be made, inventory systems updated, fixed assets, all that kind of stuff. We're targeting October 1st as our go-live date for that system, so it's only 25 days away. We are planning and have organized and designed end-user training systems for all the users that would be in the outline departments that are needing to get requisitions. That will happen the second or third week of September. We're working on getting our final proofs of purchase orders, of checks. They will be available and ready to run when we start running checks on a weekly basis going forward in October. And one thing that we have in our weekly, monthly newsletter is because we're going live on October 1st, we'll be doing kind of a mini year-end closing within the purchasing division, so they can take all the purchase orders that have active balances on them, basically close them out in our current system, and get them set up in our new system. So that will occur the week before the October 1st, so the week of September 25th or so. We're calling it a purchase order party because they will have to enter in seven or eight hundred... Seven or eight hundred different purchase orders into the new system with the existing balances they have at the time that they are transferred over. We also will have to do a mini inventory validation so that when we put the new warehouse system in place on October 1st, the inventory that we have in the warehouse will match up with what we have on hand at that point in time. We do that on... We actually do that every single month. This one will be just a little bit more complicated just because we're going from the current system, not just rolling over the current system, but rolling over the current system and putting it into the new system, too. So there'll be a few things that we're doing that weekend to get ready, but we're moving well along, and once we get that done, there will be a lot of hand-holding that we'll be doing between the people that have been trained to be the trainers. We have some subject matter experts that will help the divisions enter in requisitions and get them familiar with it. One of the biggest components that will be, in my view, a much better way of processing, when an invoice comes in, it will come into accounts payable, so all the... Accounts payable is the first entrance for anything that comes in, so we don't have people receiving invoices in outline locations that we may never even know about. So once they come in, they'll digitize them into the system, and from then on out, any and all the various approvals that have to happen, either through a PO matching up with invoice, or a division signing off on it, will be all electronic. So a division manager can go in there and say, yes, we got this widget, and we approved that bill, and once that approval comes back to finance in the AP system, they can get it validated and get it run on the next check batch. And the thing I'm really looking forward to is for all those vendors that want to get paid electronically, this system will allow us to do that, so we won't have to have 300 checks run every single week. We'll be able to process checks and ACHs for vendors at the same time and just not generate those checks and just generate the payment to them. A lot of exciting things coming up very quickly, so that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Wilkey? Okay, it looks like a lot is going on, and I'm assuming cross-training's going on, and everyone's happy with the system so far, all the users?
Well, a lot of it's been training of the people that will be intimately using it, the accounts payable staff, the purchase order, purchasing division staff. What's going to happen in the next couple of weeks is to... And a lot of the other people have been involved, too, but involve the outline locations that will be asking for paper products or oil filters or something. They will be able to do that electronically, online, and hardly any paper will be generated from that process.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next presentation is by Acting Fire Chief Mark Bray. He's going to be giving us a report on the retrofit process for Fire Station 1.
Hey, Mayor, council members, members of the audience. My name is Mark Bray, Acting Fire Chief. This was a council request from Councilman Starbuck for an update on the retrofit grant for Fire Station Number 1, so bear with me while I get through this. There's some background. The background is during the 2013-15 budget process, council approved funding to conduct an engineering study related to seismic risk of Fire Station 1 in the event of an earthquake. Fire Department staff worked with public works staff to identify the scope of work and qualified consultants to conduct the study. Study results and final recommendations were delivered on June 23rd, 2014. Per the study and in the opinion of the engineers, the building is very likely to be partially or completely non-functional as a fire station if subjected to current building code design level earthquake forces. The most serious is the deficit connections of wood frame roofs and second floor to the masonry walls in all parts of the facility. Failure of these connections would likely lead to a partial collapse of the roofs and walls. Following the receipt of the study, which included project costs, Fire Department staff initiated research as to grants to the retrofit project might qualify for. Research and subsequent discussions with CALOES indicated that projects this type would meet FEMA's criteria for consideration of a pre-disaster mitigation grant. Council authorized the city manager to sign a letter of commitment to meet matching fund requirements during the April 20th, 2016 council meeting. The notice of intent has been submitted. We have been invited to... We have to be invited to submit a full application after the notice of intent's been reviewed and approved. We should hear this decision in another month or two. This was per Diana Diner, who helped write the notice of intent. This is our second attempt to receive this grant. Last attempt, the Fire Department submitted a notice of intent. We're invited to submit a full application. This application was moved to the second round, but we did not receive an award. This is reasonable for a program of this kind to take multiple attempts. The notice of eligibility does not guarantee an award. These grants are highly competitive and are dependent on the level of funding allotted to the state each grant cycle. There is a chance that FEMA may counter with a scaled-back amount, which may or may not be enough to complete the project. In the event we receive the grant and are able to move forward, the entire Fire Station 1 operation will need to be relocated for 12 to 24 months. Staff has included the cost of relocation in the grant application. Fiscal impacts, the proposed federal share is $2,831,204. The proposed city share would be $943,735, for a total of $3,774,940. I included a couple attachments that came directly out of our application. One is the breakdown of costs. The other is the cost share, and the third one is the projected schedule. So in conclusion, pursuing the pre-disaster mitigation grant program is the most cost-effective manner in which to fund the Fire Station 1 seismic retrofit project. Before the grant can be awarded, Lompoc's hazard mitigation plan must be approved and a resolution signed, which happened during the consent calendar tonight. If the grant is received, the city will have to come up with their share of the $943,735 the city committed to during an April 20th, 2016 council meeting. Currently, this money is not earmarked in the proposed budget. I did have a couple conversations with Diana about when we would need that, whether it be a lump sum up front, lump sum in the back, or spaced out through the project. She said that they're quarterly payments spaced out through the project. When you look at the account, the timeline of events, the, we probably wouldn't even get, if this grant was approved tomorrow, we probably wouldn't even get to the phase where we had to start tearing down the station for about a year. The other piece I asked Diana, that's not in this report, it came a little bit later, is if we were to get into the second round and, and pursue it, what kind of timeframe would we be looking at from the time we pursued it to the time that they would say, go, you got the grant, if we were approved? She said that was about a four-to-nine-month period. So, there is some time before this money would need to, need to be available. And finally, if we were to move to the next step, we would need to reopen grant-writing agreements with California Consulting. And again, that was Diana, and I tried to get a ballpark figure from her, what it would cost to help us write the full application, and she came back with around $10,000. That concludes my report. I'm available for questions?
Any questions for Chief Bray? Come for Starbuck.
Well, not so much for Chief Bray, but maybe Mr. Weinmiller and all. Without budgeting the $943,000, we're going to commit money to write the grant, we're going to need, if we're accepted, to come up with the money for the grant. What is our long plan on, on, on this here?
Well, at the time we were applying for the grant, we weren't sure what the, what the cost share was going to be. We've now become aware that of, as Chief Bray had mentioned, it'd be $943,000. At the time, we were building the current budget also, we had not, we didn't have the, the facts of the information on, on the city cost of, of the, for the Fire Station retrofit fit. So, at this point, Chief Bray and I are in agreement, if we needed to present all of this to you so that you can make the decision, on the one hand, you've identified the retrofit of Fire Station One as being a top priority. I believe it was your number-one priority at the budget priority session, setting session. But now that we know what the numbers are, it's, we're, we're back to ask you if you wish to, to plow forward. If you do, we're going to need to identify where some $953,000, if you count the $10,000 for the assistance from the consultant, where that's going to come from. We, we can work through what the suggestions are, but, but we're definitely clear that we don't want to proceed from this point unless we, as a city, are committed toward raising those funds to move in that direction. There are some options. We can discuss what the options are to get the money. You may not, you may like or not like them, but go over what those are.
This, this amount here would be about equivalent to our first payment on the new station too, so I would think that we should be almost ready in the tracks to move with this.
Well, then, our, our plan for Station Two is to pay for that with financing, and certainly, yes, that is one option here, is to bond and, and set up a, a payment for, for it to be made, and we could then do it that way. So, if we were going to proceed with Station Two, we could, we could set up similar, we would have needed a financing mechanism, and we can set up a similar financing mechanism, yes, that's one, one of the options.
Back to you, Chief Bray. Now, if something happens and we're not able to come up with this, and we're not able to get this grant, we would not only be out the money for it, but then we would move down the FEMA ladder.
Well, one of the options that's, that does need to be discussed is if we don't think we're going to be able to match our share we committed to, we, as a city, should probably pull ourselves out of the grant before we get awarded. I think talking with Mr. Wilkie, it would, wouldn't behoove us to continue the process, get awarded the grant, then say no thanks, because that would put us on a lower priority for future grants. I think if, if, if the feeling of the council is we cannot come up with the money to, to go with the retrofit, that it would be better that we ask to be pulled out of it due to budgetary concerns before.
One thing I noticed earlier, and I didn't catch it before, was that FEMA reserves the right to vary the amount of the grant. You might not know the answer to this, but with Hurricane Harvey, we have Irma coming, probably going to do damages, FEMA will be probably stressed out a little bit. Will that have any possible roll-down effect to lowering the amount of money we would be entitled?
I don't, I don't have to answer that. I kind of knew at this.
I didn't, yeah, it's kind of hard to forecast, isn't it?
Councilor Vega?
Chief, you, you said the estimate was folded in also with relocation. What would, what were, what are the options there for relocation, okay? Or if you have an estimate on cost, you guys must know where you're going to go.
Well, some things have been discussed. One of the options, one of the main options we were looking at is no longer available. We were going to use the property, the city property where Wyrick, the old Wyrick is, but now that's being used by a trust company. I would have to pursue some options, just right off the top of my head. I think we would, one option might be the vacant bank that's on, excuse me, on Walnut Nate Street. I think another option might be the Champion Center. You know, that's already set up for different rooms, so another option would be finding a vacant lot and putting, putting modulars in, which is what we're going to do on the Wyrick property. We're, our vision was to use some of the existing buildings for housing fire equipment and setting up office space in there, and then just having some modules for the, for the sleeping quarters, but that is, that's since moved on.
Sounds like you have a couple of options, thank you. So, I, I would like you to proceed with giving us some of our options on the financing, but before we do that, these are going to be hypothetical, hypothetical questions naturally, but in the event of a massive earthquake, I'm assuming that building could come down and trap our fire trucks?
Right. According to the report, it, it would be a pancake-style collapse where the walls, if the walls moved enough, the, the joints for the walls and the roofs would fall in.
Okay, so we would possibly lose fire trucks, possibly lose lives of firefighters?
Right, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, could possibly not be a, a building that we could, yeah, that we could use if it, if it did have a collapse and an earthquake.
Okay, so, I think, I'd like to hear some of our options on financing this. If, if we were to be awarded, what are our options on financing?
Off the top of my head, a number of them are, like I said before, we could, we could bond, we could do additional cuts out of other areas of, of the budget, understanding you're trading off community services one place or another for that. You have a $2 million emergency reserve. I'm not suggesting this is an emergency, nor how you'd want to use the reserve, but you do have $2 million sitting there, and if you decided it's, it's of that import, it's entirely within your control to either not touch that money or touch it and use it for this or some other purpose. We could, I have one other thought that was, that's, sorry, escaped off the top of my head, but we've got a few choices to go. Part of it is setting aside, oh, and, oh, I was going to mention IA tax, tax measures available as well. So, the point being is, even though we'll have some time to accumulate the money, depending upon the timing within the project of when we'd have to deliver the cash, it's still, the chief and I are in agreement that we really need to have an, an upfront commitment one way or the other. In other words, if we're, if we're not sure that we'd be willing to deliver this and therefore do one of these other actions, either sacrifice in another area or increase available cash in other, in another manner, then we should probably be not bringing back, you know, it wouldn't be as critical for us to bring back the, the approval of the grant fund, so we'd be better to retreat from that pursuit right now. But I do feel it's needed for the, personally, I feel it's needed for the, for the safety of the structure and the people working in there, and you've identified it as your number-one priority, so we stand ready to react as you lead.
Not only we've identified it as our number-one priority, naturally for the safety of the equipment, safety of the officers or firefighters, but also the safety of every citizen in this community. I mean, if, if we were to lose Fire Station One, the firefighters in there, I think we're putting a good portion of our community at risk. So, I for one would like us to move forward with this, addressing, having staff aggressively look for financing options and get back to us, but I think it's something that we cannot afford to go on for another, what's the next cycle for bonds, a couple of years?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, assuming it's a couple of years. I mean, I don't think we can afford to do that and put our entire community at risk, so. Then Councilor Starbuck, you were next. Oh, Councilor Mosby, okay, go ahead.
Maybe Steph could just bring it back, so we could, could do that, maybe instead of keep going, because I guess this is a presentation, really, right?
Right, we, we're not ready to have you take action tonight, but we were hoping to get a, a feel and a feedback of whether we should be returning with your, with your being in the position to approve acceptance of the grant, and, and understanding that by doing so, I think we should be committing ourselves to that, raising that approximately $1 million.
And I, and I think personally myself, I mean, much how you did with the swimming pool, finding some, some bond, some mechanism as that way would probably be appropriate. You're looking at something that's a, a long-term benefit to the community, so I think that's an appropriate way to go, myself.
Correct, it would certainly match the, the lifetime of the financing matches, well, well matches with the lifetime of the benefit.
Yeah, I was reading a newspaper article from, I think it was 1978, how they were, when they tore it down and built that up, and they were bragging, it was $600,000 they spent redoing it all, and it was going to take us well into the next century, so, might share that with the Lumphoek Record on that one. But he missed it by a little bit, but definitely, I think it's, it's an item that all of us understand, and we need to move forward, so, I mean, you could bring it back with a, a few, different funding mechanisms. I think one like the swimming pool would be most appropriate. The payment scale, I think you said $169,000 a year, or something like that, Mr. Wilkie? Something that was on that $750,000. So, you know, your ballpark is, it's something I think we can work with.
The repayments would totally revolve around how long it's funded for. So, with a pool, there wasn't any kind of extension of a life, but with this, it's probably going to be an extension of life of ten, fifteen, twenty years, so it could easily be much less than that for the dollar amount that we need to borrow to do the match.
Okay. And yeah, that'd be my suggestion. I know it's just an item for discussion, but.
Councilor Starbuck?
Yeah, so, we do want to move forward with it. I, I mean, I'm sure there's a consensus here now. So, we'll commit the $943,000 based upon the award of $2.8 million. What if we don't get the $2.8 million, we get $2 million? Where's the other $800,000 going to come out of at that point? Or can we retract and back out of this and still maintain our ability? I mean, just looking into the future in a worst case here, if we don't get the $2.8, or is the $2.8 a guaranteed number?
I would have to try to chase that answer for you. I don't have an answer that I'd be able to give, or willing to give, right here, so I can.
As, as I understand it, though, it's been, the $2.8 is what's been represented as the award we'd be receiving. If they change their mind, we're certainly then, that takes us out of this position of having gone back, you know, we, we were concerned that we'd apply for it, they'd give us the $2.8, and then we wouldn't make good on matching it with the $943,000. But if they change their story, we're certainly entitled then to reconsideration.
I mean, you know, we don't want to settle for less retrofit.
Right, understood.
Councilor Vega?
You know, I, I'm in agreement with moving forward with seeing what the financing options are and would be. I think that's what, what's on the table right here, not exactly adopting, saying yes. The other question I'd have for Chief Bray is, has there been an inspection or some sort of building inspection done along with this, when they had the estimate for the retrofit for lifespan of this building and condition-wise? You know, aside from the retrofit, is the building in basically good condition, structure-wise? And, you know, is, is it well worth the retrofit, is what I'm saying? You know, you're, not about the, your, your lives, your lives are invaluable, but I'm talking about the actual structure itself.
I didn't see anything that expressed that as I was, as I was doing my research to make this presentation. My understanding, or my, this would be more of an assumption than an understanding, would be that when they're doing the retrofit and they're securing, they're making the building up to code, that, that, that would be part of it, but I didn't find anything that specifically expressed what you just asked.
Yeah, I got you, and, and maybe that's something, Patrick, as we move forward with some of that, maybe, obviously, you guys at the Fire Department, you guys know what your home building is, but it'd be nice to at least know general consensus of, of that building, you know, what the expected lifespan would be with the retrofit, to know we're getting enough, enough life out of it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? So, is that the direction, okay with you? We've, you have a consensus from the council that we?
Yes, thank you.
Choose to have you move forward? Thank you, Chief. Okay, we're moving on now to appointments. We have several appointments we're going to be trying to make tonight. First is to the Beautification Commission. These are my appointees, our appointment, and we have two applicants, Warren Keller and Scott Reardon. And I'd like to appoint Warren Keller to the Beautification Commission. With that, I'll need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? And let's vote. And that passes five-zero, thank you. Next, we have an appointment to the Human Services Commission, and this is Councilor Mosby's appointment. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Vega and Councilman Mosby have each one, we have one applicant. Have the two of you decide which one of you would like to consider this applicant? Councilor Vega?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion there, that we accept Mrs. Deana Hardeman to be a part of that group.
Okay, and I'll second that. Oh, I'm sorry, what?
I was going to second it.
Okay, that's okay, okay, so we've got a first and a second, okay. Any discussion? Let's vote on that. And that passes five-zero. Next is an appointment to the Utility Commission. That is my appointment, and we have one candidate, that is Jerry Nyman, so I'd like to nominate Mr. Nyman to serve on the Utility Commission.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Wrong button.
I'll second. I'm voting, I'm done.
Okay, yeah. Okay, any discussion? Let's vote on that. And that passes five-zero. Okay, and the last one is a Youth Commission. We have, for anyone watching out there in the audience or listening on radio, watching on webcast, watching on TV, listening to the radio, we have a lot of openings on our Youth Commission. We have one adult position open, we have three, four youth appoint, or positions open, and two non-voting positions, so we have a lot of openings. Right now, we have one candidate, it's a youth, so would anyone like to make a motion? This is on Alexandria, Alexandra Lamca, it looks like, L-A-M-C-A.
What term do we?
Well, you can, you can choose. I would, if I were you, do we have someone from, because this young lady is seventeen years old, I don't know what the age limit on serving on the Youth Commission.
Why don't we just say we would put her for the youth term expiring on the first of 2018?
You could do that, if you want to make that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll give him a second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for Alexandria to serve as, for the term expiring January- January of 2018. Okay, without any discussion, let's vote on that. And that passes 5-0. And I think those are our appointments. We are now moving on to new business. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Vega.
You know, I'd love to see if anybody out there was part of any of the appointments out here, or if they're just not here. Always like to give them an opportunity to stand up if they are here and be recognized, but if they're not here, that's fine. But I wanted to give them that opportunity.
Sure, good. Okay, let's move on to item number seven, no, excuse me, item number eight, new business. This is discussion and direction regarding California Voting Rights Act and changing from an at-large to a district-based system for election for the city council. Let's see, this is Mr. Penoni.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason we're here this evening is because the state legislature has decided from policy perspective that there's a lot of good public reasons to allow cities to create district-based voting as opposed to at-large voting. The policy ups and downs of that is not something I'm gonna get into. We can certainly talk about that if you want, but it's given that the state legislature has created the California Voters' Writing Act, Voters' Rights Act, and they have given the public the ability to enforce that by challenging and bringing lawsuit or threatening lawsuits. The city did receive such a threat, and the state law also creates a pretty short timeframe within which you have to decide how you want to address the challenge. The way you can address the challenge is either just say that you don't feel you want to go to a district election at all and fight the battle in court, or take some timing that the statute allows to give you some additional time before you have to make a final decision. If you take the first approach of, if you take the first approach of wanting to fight it, just realize that the history of California's cities and school districts and other districts battling the California Voters' Rights Act is not good for the cities and other governmental entities. There has not been a successful defense of that. I'm not therefore saying you shouldn't try, I'm just saying there isn't a defense. So stepping aside from that, tonight, what I'm recommending is that we take the benefit the statute gives us to allow us a little more time before we have to make, before you have to make a final decision. The steps are, first, you have to adopt a resolution of intention, which is what's on the agenda tonight. And what that does basically is it buys you another 90 days in order to do some more analysis, which we'll do, to see whether or not you have any possible chance, if you choose to, to defend the lawsuit. And if you don't, then it sets up the process for you to be able to establish district voting. Again, the resolution of intent doesn't commit you to have to go to district vote, but it gives you an opportunity to continue to study it. So, I, I think we should leave it there, because I don't want to get into the ins and outs of the legal ramifications of challenging or not challenging. So before you tonight is whether or not you want to take that step. Again, you aren't required to have to take that step, but if you do, it gives you a little more breathing room before you have to make a final decision, one way or the other.
Mr. Penoni, I, I think I had mentioned these two years earlier, the questions I'm gonna be asking you, because questions have come to me from public, members of the public that I did not have the answers to. So I'd like to ask them of you now, so if other people have the same question, they, you get the answer. So the first question I was asked is, instead of taking any action by us, as a board, could we just put that decision to the public on the 2018 ballot and let the public decide whether they want us to go to district elections?
You certainly could do that. However, if the public were to decide, if the electors, electorate were to decide not to have the district elections, then the threatened lawsuit could continue. And even if you decided to put it on the ballot, the lawsuit could still go forward, and if the plaintiffs were able to convince a judge that there was a violation of the California Voting Rights Act, the judge would order you to do it, no matter what the electorate decided.
Okay. So then the second question that was asked of me is, let's say we go with, we decided to do district elections, and our city's divided up into four different districts. District Three, for one reason or another, no one applies to run for city council in District Three. What happens to that district for representation?
You, most likely what would happen is, you would then fall into the, the issue of what happens when there's a vacancy on the council. And then you have 60 days to either appoint someone or to call a special election. If you appointed someone, that appointment would likely be for only a two-year period, because it's a four-year term, but you'd only be able to do it for two years, because that would be the next time there'd be an election. So, the council would end up being able to appoint someone. It seems to me, although it's not totally clear, black and white clear, it seems to me that if you were to do that and appoint someone, you should appoint someone from the district, from, who lives in the district that didn't vote, but it isn't absolutely clear you should have to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Penoni? Councilmember Vega?
Mr. Penoni, it sounds like we have enough information here to support the fact that litigation for the city of Lompoc is probably not a good thing, okay? It doesn't look like we would prevail with the information that was provided for us in the staff report, some of the reporting that I've seen, some of the documentation. So I think you've already reaffirmed that, that in most cases, it's going to be a drain on general fund, as, as it would be in staff report for us to litigate this. And, is that correct?
At this state.
At this state.
At this stage, I agree. I wouldn't want to say that absolutely there's no chance, because we're gonna need that data, as the staff report indicates. We're gonna get a professional to do the analysis, to see what the voting records actually are, to see whether there is any chance that, that the city could say there isn't any of the issues that the California Voters' Right Act is trying to defend against. So, at this point, yes.
I understand. I think the other thing is, I'm a little bit, kinda surprised at the recommendation to buy more time, because we've been provided, and there's quite a bit of information on district elections that pretty much show that the cha, the city has a, a very minute chance of prevailing in, in this type of, because of this voting act. To buy more time would be just to allow you more time to hire a consultant to see if we can prevail, but at the same time, it sounds like we're gonna lose money either way.
I guess the best way for me to answer that is by an example. There's another client that my firm represents, I'm not city attorney, but my firm represents the client, another city, and a staff report was prepared just like this, recommending that the resolution of intent was adopted. And when additional facts came in, it appeared that there was a good fighting chance. And so the council at that time decided, don't even adopt the resolution of intent, let's go fight. We don't have that data yet, and I'm not saying you'll get the data, but it's possible that during the 90 days, you may get some data that will be presented to you. And in fact, what we're hoping is, at the close session, at a close session on the 19th, we're hoping to have the data by then, so that you can then know whether or not you want to continue down the path of, of the public hearings or whatnot for a district election or not.
I got you. Another question here. It shows that even the city of Santa Barbara has actually gone in and, however you want to call it, instead of going to litigation, go ahead and kind of make a deal? Is that what you call that?
Carpinteria did it too, and I think Santa Maria.
For the public, I'd just like you, you all to know that this isn't far away back east, okay, that these people have prevailed. I just want to look at, you know, we've been looking at everything else that's general fund and budget-related, and I just want to make sure that we're on the winning end of this, or what are we doing here? It seems like we should be looking at our money for the budget, just, and, and, and watch out for our general fund on this issue is just as important. I think some of this decision-making is probably being taken lightly, because they think that the people that are involved with this won't prevail in a city of Lompoc, especially with a 54% demographic of that vote. Whether we agree with it or not, it just seems like we're on the weak end of that, as far as if you use the, the demographics of, of ethnic demographics here in Lompoc. So, wanted to make that statement and, and, and let everybody know that here, it looks like it would cost quite a bit. So basically, what this is called, time, pre-litigation type thing, it's a time to make a deal if you guys think that, or everyone has a consensus that this would be beneficial to Lompoc. But whether it'd be beneficial to Lompoc or not, there's gonna be a, a, a large or a huge cost to this. So, you gotta weigh your battles here. You guys say, well, we don't want it, but we're gonna throw money at it anyway. I don't think that's a good way of looking at it, because the information that's here shows that just about every city has prevailed thus far. So right now is the opportunity to figure out and see if we want to maybe change the way we do business or spend money.
And Councilmember Vega, to add on to my comment before, it, it's certainly important to look at the data that the plaintiffs have provided, but remember, they're the plaintiffs, so they're gonna provide you data that's gonna support their case. What we're gonna do is go at, at a consultant who is going to be looking at it objectively, not, and objectively, clearly they're gonna be objective, because their goal is gonna be to assist you on what your decision should be, and whether or not you should fight it or not. So.
I got you. And it looks like the, the minimum cost, or even if you were to pre-litigate, is $30,000 plus, regardless of, of just saying yes and, and making a deal, okay? I got you. There's many things that come through this city that, it seems like there's a lot of things that people are just making a deal on, because they can get money. My issue is that I see that the price tags of, in excess of $1 million, to $2 million, to $3.5 million, to $4.5 million that people have spent to litigate. So I have to be concerned, okay, that the cost could be, you're in the, in the attorney-type business, so you guys are gonna be the ones getting paid. So there's two ends of this stick. So I'm looking out for the public here to make sure that you guys understand that whether or not you agree with it or not, or you don't think the population is 54%, or you think that people aren't given a fair shot. That's what the elections are for, okay? Either way, whether you split it up four, five, six ways, people still get to vote. No one gets to take that away from you.
Good, but I hope, I hope, I just need to say it, I hope you don't think that I'm providing this recommendation, because you think it's gonna make money for me, because that's clearly not what I'm doing.
No, it was just a point that me made. No, I got you, okay? But I wanted to make sure you guys know that it is real money, okay? We're over here fighting over a retrofit for the fire station. We're not fighting over it, we're fighting over a lot of things here that are really, really important here. I hate to see us waste money, because they're gonna, it's gonna be a different way of doing things, okay? I think that no matter where you live, you still have an opportunity to run for council. Maybe you don't want it cut up, and I get it, but it looks like that's where it's going. The reality of it is, it's gonna cost us a lot of money if we don't make the right decision.
Councilmember Osborne.
For clarification, the research being done to evaluate independently whether or not we're violating voting rights would actually also be applicable if we moved forward, because the same data would help us look at what our draft lines would be for various maps.
That's true.
Okay.
On that same note, I don't really look at this as buying time, because, and what we're looking at is, if we move forward today, on Exhibit A, these items on Exhibit A, we have to do whether we, this delay for those 90 days or not, we need the, what, four or five public meetings. We need to, I mean, this all goes down to the day 90, but we still have to have these media, public meetings for
Absolutely.
get public input. So, I don't really, don't look at it as buying time. If we approve this tonight, we start immediately, September 6th is when we're gonna start doing public outreach. September 6th is tomorrow, we start doing public outreach, which is recommended in this. September 18th, 6th to 30th, 18th, and on the 19th, we have our first public meeting. Second public meeting is in October 3rd, third public meeting, October 17th. So we're moving forward. We're not, we're not delaying anything. If we take action tonight, we are moving forward with this process.
But, but the ultimate decision doesn't have
Absolutely.
be made for 90 days.
Absolutely, but, but we're moving forward, if we accept this staff recommendation, we are moving forward today with the process. Councilmember Vega?
I got you. And you know, but every time we move forward also, I'm sorry.
Because that's the tight timeframe
Exactly right, yeah.
requires.
And I got you. My, my, my concern here is that every time we make a decision, it does cost money, it's not free. So that's what my concern is, okay? And what are we losing here, Joe, by moving forward with your recommendation? Are we losing time-wise as far as making a decision by the 2018 election process?
No, not at all.
But we are authorizing you to spend some money on a consultant to see whether we even have a, a chance at all, which, we kind of know that already, don't we?
We're gonna be spending the money to, to have that data, yes.
And what kind of money would that be? I mean, I have to ask. I mean, I, I understand here, but every time we do something, we always kind of get bit, because we never ask what the cost is. I understand why, why people would go along with staff recommendation all the time, but that's, that's gonna have to stop here. We have to question these things. That's why we're a representative of the people. The last time I asked a question, it didn't come off well, because you know what? I think that the people deserve an answer.
It, it's about $5,000 to $8,000. For this first step, it's $5,000 to $8,000.
Thank you. And don't this information, if we're gonna be drawing up districts, we need this information to draw up the districts, that we're gonna be spending this money on.
As a first step, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, we're gonna spend the money now, or spend it later, unless we want to draw up the districts.
We're gonna spend it now and later, because we're gonna spend more to continue getting the data.
So I don't know where this discussion is, that we're spending money that we don't have to spend. We have to spend this money. If we, whether we do it now, thinking that we've got the 90 days to tell them to go away, we want to fight it. And I, I agree with Councilmember Vega, that the information is here, but we'd lose, okay? But we, we're gonna be spending this money to find out where these districts are to be drawn up. We don't, we don't know right now. I mean, we could easily take the city and draw it into four quadrants, H and Ocean, and just draw it north, south, east and west, but that would probably not suffice the Voting Rights Act, because you need, you'd have to have 4,000 registered voters in each one of these sections. And we don't know if there's 4,000s in, in the quadrants, we have to have it drawn up properly. So, anyway, so, any other questions?
I have one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Again, we're spending money on a consultant to see whether we could prevail, is what your comment was, okay? And then it changed around and turned around and said, hey, we need this consulta, this consultant to come in and tell us how the districts would be laid out. I have to disagree with that. I think that probably the districts, is that what, what the process would be, Joe, that we have to hire someone to tell us what our districts would be?
Yes.
Based on, okay, so we're gonna have to spend this money anyway, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So this isn't money that's gonna be frivolously spent?
It's definitely not frivolous.
Okay. And again, you know, I'm gonna ask the hard questions here tonight, because things have to change here. The path of least resistance tend to go along with staff recommendation without asking questions, I think needs to, to, we're entitled to ask these questions also, okay? Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Penoni? Okay, with that, we'll open up the public comment. You'll have three minutes to speak to us on this issue. Please line up.
Hello. As you remember me, my name is Jitsebe Sandoval. I'm with the District Elections Committee. I'm here to talk to you about districts. I really appreciate the fact that you put it on the agenda, because this is something you guys need to talk about. And great that you were able to engage the community in this, and thank you for asking those hard questions. So, I worked down in Galida, and I worked in the one in Carpinteria. And so far, the most innovative one we saw was in Galida. Ways they were able to save money was they were, they actually made a commission, got public engagement. They're waiting for the 2020 census, so that they can get that commission to draw their own lines. So it's not just hiring somebody else, it's actually getting the community together in order to figure out where these lines are gonna be established, but it's also figure out where these lines are going to be established. But it's also engaging not just regular community members that are normally here at these things, but it's also getting people that you've never even seen in these meetings. It's getting youth involved. It's getting women involved. It's getting minorities involved. It's getting everybody in the community involved. And for that question you had about what if somebody doesn't run in that district, so far, that hasn't happened in Santa Barbara. I opened up The Independent the other day, and in The Independent, I saw, because the elections are coming up, I saw at least four people for the East Side District, a place where nobody has even had a candidate before districts. So, this is a wonderful opportunity, and you guys are on the side of history to make this a beautiful, wonderful thing where you can get everybody involved. So, do the right thing. Talk about it. Don't fight it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. What's your dog's name?
Bo.
Oh, okay.
He's 12 years old, so he's enjoying his air conditioning in here.
Sure.
Again, I want to say thank you for talking about district elections this evening. As was mentioned, it's a very important topic. It was also mentioned that it is cost-saving to involve the community. And so, I want to speak to a bit of a dream, I guess, you know, bring in Martin Luther King and having a dream, a dream of something bigger happening here. I've worked with school districts in Lompoc, and I've heard from teachers. I've heard from students. I've heard from families. And they don't feel that they're being heard. There is a representation that is being called for, and people, there's a voice that's kind of crying out, and they feel kind of forgotten about. And so, there's a desire. There's a place for these people in the community, and they want their place to be here in Lompoc. There's a greater desire for unity in the community and participation by the youth, by the teachers, by the administration, and most importantly, by the families. And so, by dreaming about this, it's not only allowing greater representation, but it's bringing the community together, and it'll create opportunities for jobs, for employment, for unity, for rallies, for festivals, for new businesses, small businesses, people to come together. And so, the elections, it's not only about just an election. It's about a community becoming whole again. And so, the appeal tonight is to dream, not in a place of fear, of worrying about money, worrying about what is going to be at the cost. Yes, that is a concern, and as the mayor and city council, we thank you for being concerned about those things. But to think of a place of, instead of fear, let's think of unity. Let's think of what draws the community together, to be whole again, to allow each voice to be heard. Martin Luther King said, "It is a riot," or "The Voice of the Unheard is a riot." And Maya Angelou, she said, "The Caged Bird Cries." And so, there's cries that we hear from people, and I want those cries to be heard. There's voices, and they want to be heard. There's, as you mentioned, 56% is a minority population here in Lompoc. And that's a big population that deserves a place to be here in Lompoc and to be represented for participation. So, there's a big step in a dream and a great opportunity here for Lompoc to open up and to allow these different districts opportunities for their voice to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I understand, we're all hesitant for change. We, as human beings, are creatures of habit, and we like our comfort zone, and we like what's the status quo. But I've stood up here many a times with issues to go back home and have friends call me and ask me, "Why does that matter? It doesn't affect you in any way?" I says, "It doesn't," but I've had many people call me and ask me to come and speak on their behalf. I think that it is equitable to do anything that brings in more people into the system. I implore you guys to consider this seriously and to look, because as an individual that will be put in that class, I can tell you that there are many individuals and many community members that are not good at public speaking, not as eager to come out, and possibility of having the district elections kind of makes that at a level where they're representing their neighborhood, their community, and might give them that little bit of advantage to be able to come out and get politically involved. I know it's sometimes hard to see it from the other side of the fence, but I can tell you that many members in the community feel like there could be a bigger and greater effort for representation. That being said, I also think that it's prudent not to expend substantial amounts of cities' funds for something that has clearly shown you have minimal chances of winning. It just doesn't make sense, after we've spent how many weeks in budgetary talks, to then go furtively spend $1, $2, $3 million on litigation that can be resolved by just being more inclusive in the system. So, I can go on and on and on about different reasons why I think this may be beneficial to the entire community, but more specifically to what I consider has been the silent majority. It's not a minority. It is a majority, and times are changing, and hopefully, we'll have more participation and get a broader view in the political system here in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, I'm here to support districts in Lompoc. And basically, government should reflect the people, and I don't see it right now. It doesn't mean you guys are not doing a good job, but I don't see it. With districting, you would have more input from women, Latinos, and other minorities, and we need it. And it's time. California's going that way anyways. Why spend money fighting it when you can use it for the fire department or the police department? We need safety instead of trying to fight something that you're going to lose anyways. So, I hope you guys make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Anne Rougey, 23-year resident of Lompoc and an ex-city councilperson. In essence, I think, this is just me, we're being blackmailed. If we don't do this, there are all these restrictions, money's going to have to be spent, and so on and so forth. And the speakers, Councilmember Vega said it was 54%. This gentleman said 56%. And I think that's where you need to come up and look at the data before you make any decision on whether to go ahead with this or not. This is happening all over the state of California. I talked to a councilwoman who's running in Santa Maria now. They also had to bow under to the pressure, and they are district elections going on right now. How you're going to divide this city up, I don't know. I don't know about the rest of you, but I know when I ran, we walked, pounded the pavement, and we talked to many, many people of ethnic diversity. And that's how we got elected. I think you need to look at the data first before you make this decision to go ahead. But this is happening all over California, and this is another unfounded mandate from the state to bow under to pressure from the lawmakers in Sacramento. So, I think, look at your data first and then make an educated decision on this, because I, for one, cannot see how we're going to divide Lompoc up into four districts and make it diverse. If ever, we worked on a cityhood campaign in Galida for many years, and we had to come up with districts. And to make them all equitable, it's very difficult, because you have to have so many in this group, and so many in this group, and so many in this group. It isn't just a straight line across. It's going to run all over this town. So, anyway, check your data first. And I also had a question about how you're going to do public education on this. That's going to be very interesting to me. So, I'm glad you're looking at finances, but check the data first before you make any decision on this blackmail that we're getting from the state. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Sarah Salcedo, and I'm actually one of the plaintiffs in this matter. I want to thank you for putting this on your agenda, and I would really like you to, or would really like to encourage you guys to pass the resolution on implant district elections for the city of Lompoc. I don't feel this is blackmail. Like I said, my grandmother, last time when I spoke, my grandmother lives right when that shooting happened on 4th of July. There's a lot of people in that neighborhood that I've spoken to that have issues, that have a voice, that want to say something but aren't being heard. There's a lot of people in the city of Lompoc that don't attend these meetings, that don't even know where to begin. And yeah, it is getting outreach and helping these people become more aware of how to go about addressing you guys. I think district elections is a good thing for Lompoc. As a Lompoc resident, I am totally for it. I really think you guys should think long and hard and continue with just going and passing this. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Have a good evening.
Anyone else? Seeing one rise, we're going to close public comment. I just want to make a quick comment. One of the speakers said, "You know, we shouldn't be hesitant to change." I don't think anyone has heard anything from anyone up here that we are hesitant to change, even objecting to this. So, don't read anything into any of us, because I think we've heard actually pretty positive comments so far. Anyway, okay, we're bringing it back to the council. Councilmember Starbuck.
A lot of notes and a lot of thought, but I'm just going to make some statements that I had, using what the plaintiffs put in. I used a lot of that information, and I didn't include some of the past people on council that did have Spanish ancestry. We'll go with strictly Latino with what I'm talking. The last couple of Hispanics that ran, Councilmember Vega, Mr. Gonzalez got up during public comment and spoke, personal reasons withdrew, but came in third place. Probably would have got a council seat. I'm thinking if the Latino population, because this only addresses the Latino issue, makes up 54% of the population currently, then the Latinos would control the popular vote. There's only 16,000 registered voters. The representation would come from registering voters in a district rather than take away from other areas. So, I mean, there may be ways around this that are equitable that would work for everybody as a suggestion. Last time, somebody got up and spoke at a public comment on a non-agenda item where they said that the districting worked very good in Long Beach. Long Beach is a huge city as compared to Lompoc. It was like during the cannabis discussions, comparing Denver to Lompoc. I think a lot of people in town are kind of taking an offense that all of a sudden, we're under litigation again from an attorney in Santa Barbara and this organization. It's a movement, but a lot of the locals are kind of, you know, we're going to go down the path. This is going to happen. I know I'm funny, but the only fair way to do this would be after the 2020 census, when you have the actual demographics. This is a melting pot. You referenced an area. There's other areas, but throughout the city, we are very diverse in this city. We've had zoning and hodgepodgeing forever. We don't want to get into gerrymandering this. This is how the county operates. That's not the way I want the city to. If we're going to do it, it's got to be fair and equitable. I sit here and I kind of, at this point, thinking to myself, "Well, okay, this pretty much is based on a Latino census and population." But now, I'm thinking, Sons of Italy, the Phil American Club, NAACP, National Organization of Women. Last elections, we've had big problems. There's no women on the council. We're not having women. We have Councilmember Osborne. We had Councilmember Rougey. You know, it's just people that want to step up and run. The perception almost that a lot of people have is this is a divide and conquer type of a thing, and I really hope that it doesn't come to that. And let's see how it works.
Anyone else? Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, again, I wanted to reference Ms. Rougey's question of the difference in numbers. We're taking this from the staff report, which said it's the United States Census Bureau Community Survey estimates for 2015, which it said the city of Lompoc was listed at 54.4%. So, I just wanted to clarify that that's where we got the number. Somebody else said 56%. You know, 54, 55, 56, it's substantial. But I just wanted to clarify that that's where we're reading this from. Councilman Starbuck just stated the same percentage also, okay?
Anything else from the council? Then I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Osborne.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 613417 outlining city council's intention to change and do the research for potentially doing this, taking the 90-day plan.
Do I have a second?
Rather than adopting the resolution, could we do that on the September 19th after the first public hearing?
Let's, I think, before we, because it's still a discussion, but I think we need to have a second on this. Is that correct, Mr. Penoni, before we change something?
Either a second or someone has to, you have declared that it died because there was no second.
Okay, well, I will second that motion. Now, we can go on with the discussion.
Okay, so, when we adopt this resolution, then, this outlines the city's intention to change, so already, we've committed to doing this without all the public input. Is that how I'm reading the schedule here? There's several public hearings.
The language in the resolution is what the statute requires, and the statute, and so, but remember, the staff report and even the resolution indicates that the final decision has not been made. The final decision won't be made until the second reading of the ordinance.
And with this, if we adopt this, we are participating. We're going to be having meetings number one, two, three, four, I think, five public meetings. We're going to be going out for education. Someone mentioned making sure that, I think, Ms. Rougey said, how you can educate the public. That's part of it. We're going to do public outreach regarding the process. This is all part of this process we're making today. This is on Exhibit A here.
In addition, mayor, adopting this resolution allows you to protect the city from a lawsuit being filed tomorrow or the next day.
Exactly right, yeah. So, we, Councilmember Vega.
So, Mr. Mayor here, we are moving forward with adopting this resolution, but we're going down the path that was laid out by the city attorney. Is that correct?
That's what the motion is, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, okay, so we're not doing anything other than what the city attorney has recommended?
Yep.
Their, the motion was to adopt the recommended action item that's on your C on your sheet.
I got you. I'm just making sure, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Then let's vote. It passes 5-0. Okay, good. Moving on, we're going to go to item number nine, which is our continued discussion on adoption of a, possible adoption of a budget for the years 17 through 19.
Council and public, the, I prepared a staff report to, that hopefully will give you the opportunity to not only consider, possibly adopt, a draft budget and turn it into a final budget, municipal budget for the fiscal years 2017, 2019. If you'll remember back on August 22nd, this council had adopted a list of items that would bring about a balanced general fund budget. Subsequent to that meeting, Mr. Mosby came by my office and alerted me to an issue involving the line item that was for equity adjustments, and that we had taken the entire amount of the $140,000 and credited it toward the general fund balancing, and not all of that was general fund dollars. I informed him at the time, that's fine, I can find some other cuts somewhere else and bring those forward when I, when I come to you here tonight. I've got to do the same thing with the library because in my, in my review with the library, the recommended cuts were going to bring about some unintended consequences, that being that we were going to move from being open five and a half days a week to only five days a week, closing the doors on one of the, on the half day, and we would be laying off three part-time employees. So, I said, I've got some tweaks to make to that, and that I'd come back with, with that list. So, the list that I prepared in the staff report is very close, almost identical to the marching orders that we got as we convened and ended our session at the August 22nd meeting. I'd like to point out to you those particular things on the list so that we're just absolutely clear of the difference. So, in the staff report, on the bottom half of page two of three, and the very top on page three, is the list of adjustments. And basically, we start with what was the draft net general fund contribution from the draft budget, the $46,546, and that we then had reduced, according to council's desire, had reduced the anticipated revenue from any ballot measures. That was $1,306,2794. Both those things were covered on the 22nd. From there, you had also taken action along the way that where you wanted to, to make the contributions, restore the contributions to five different agencies, Lompoc Museum, Human Services Commission, Grants Central, C3H, the North County Rape Crisis Center, and the Chamber of Commerce. And so, those were all added back in, as we talked about on the 22nd. That left us with a total needing of either increased revenues or increased, or decreased expenses in the general fund of $1,839,948. So, one of the things we did was recognize additional revenue from building permits of $175,000. That brought to a total of what we needed, a total expense reductions of $1,664,948 in the general fund. Again, we had agreed on the 22nd to, there were seven items that had appeared, that were grouped as cuts that had appeared in previous draft considerations. Reducing fleet fuel, eliminating recruitment campaign, eliminating formation of the Old Town Business Improvement District, eliminating data analysis project, reducing facilities, services, reducing economic development, special events, and reducing some part-time recreational staffing. That was a total of $369,000 for those seven items, and we'd talked about that frequently on the 22nd. Then there were voluntary furloughs of $223,000. We'd said we weren't going to look at the entire amount we thought we'd give for furloughs we were, because we didn't want to have a, the indication was you were not interested in having closure of City Hall on alternating Fridays. There was a reduction of parks refuge charges of $20,000, and there was a postponement of the demolition of old, the old pool building of $750,000. Now, the other adjustments of the five items, there are three of the last, three of the last four items that appear on page two, and two of the top three items on page three. So, first of all, for the two items we need to adjust, the equity adjustments were listed as of the marching orders we had had on the 22nd as being $140,000. But as I alluded to before, that was not all general fund related. Only $90,000 was general fund, so we reduced that $140 to 90. The, the library reductions were listed $207,000 and change. We were, as we examined that, we saw that even though the intent was to bring it back to the same spending level as the prior budget cycle, that because of the increase in the payments for the, for the pension obligation, that we were not going to have the same budget available, and that we were going to have these service impacts. So, I did not believe it was your intent to have a reduction in the service hours of the library. If that is your intent, certainly we can, we can address that tonight. So, I reduced that from the $207,000 to about $103,000. So, we had about another $154,000 that we had to come up with in cuts. And those that are what I've listed here in the report are the grant reduction, that's the crossing guard program, a grant we were giving to the school district of $93,500. We're not making any comments about the, we're not disparaging the crossing guard program, just our belief that that is the responsibility of the school district and not of the city, as it is with every other school district I'm aware of. Park maintenance reductions and transfers of $12,200. This was a reduction of about $6,000 on trail maintenance, and a reduction of about $6,000 on Barkin Park. My understanding is that that was to be a responsibility of the foundation. Then finally, the reduction of water utility costs because the water rates were adopted less than had planned, and so we included that reduction to the parks of 40,000, of about 41,000. So, altogether, the reduction, we had additional revenue of $175,000, and reductions of, additional reductions of general fund expenses of $1,702,000, almost rounded. And so, that leaves a finalized budget with a net general fund contribution of $37,041. And so, staff recommends you would adopt that final general fund budget and other non-general fund adjustments that we've been making along the way, including deferring capital improvements and the like that have been included, and that you would adopt Resolution Number 613517, adopting the biennial budget for fiscal years 2017 to 2019. That concludes my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Wyman. Councilmember Mosby.
Just for the record, if you guys could explain the reduced fleet fuel, there's been a little bit of confusion as to how that never came about. Somebody's trying to reference that we're going to not let police cars drive on the street and et cetera, et cetera, but I don't think that's what that was, right?
No, it's just a pricing estimation adjustment because we're always anticipating sometimes as much as two and a half years in advance what the commodity pricing, the realized commodity pricing is going to be. Anything to add to that? No?
And I want to thank you for finding the, doing the water analysis. By the rates not going up, we saved almost $41,000, which is significant. The, getting it back to the park maintenance reductions and transfers, the $12,200, and I don't believe that when the park was built, in fact, there wasn't an MOU for that park as established. I know the mayor was on the Barkin Park group somewhere, and he might remember that, but I don't believe there was a document referencing that. I know a temporary right-of-entry came about with the group so that they could actually pull weeds in the park, but I don't believe there was anything established in writing anywhere that had that group. I mean, did anybody talk to the group to see if that's something they're willing to take over?
No, that's just a report I had gotten from someone in the group, probably upon my arrival here, and then I was surprised to then see it in our budget, that Barkin Park was going to be taken care of. If that's not correct, the line item is only, like I said, about, about $6,000, and you could remove the entire 12,2 from the list and still have a positive net contribution of about $25,000.
And my recommendation, if those are items we want to move forward with, I would think that'd be great that we contact the group, bring them, you know, let's have a, let's have a meeting, and that's, you know, I don't want to see these people getting blindsided and, and, you know, if that's the case, if there's a document referencing as such, I think would be, we could find that.
Mr. Mosby, if I could just quick interject. I think that'd be easy to find out. We've got records from the meetings where the city council did approve moving forward with the Barkin Park. We may or may not have a video still of that. I'd be very, I mean, if we have that, we just review that. Instead of recalling my recollections of it, I think, Councilmember Starbuck, were you on the council at that time?
Not with the Barkin Park, I wasn't.
Okay, so I guess I was the only one on there. My recollection, but I wouldn't vote, or swear to it, that my recollection was that the foundation, the Barkin Park Committee was going to maintain it, but that was just my recollection. But I think if we look at the minutes from that meeting where we did approve it, and if there's video of it, just take a look at that, and that'll, that'll tell us. I'm sorry to interrupt now.
Rather, probably design an MOU, and if it's not, then maybe we could move forward. If that's the wishes of the council, then if it's not an MOU, maybe we can get something lined up for that, because you wouldn't want to just turn something over to a group without making sure they got the insurance and everything else, I think, right? And then the trails, I think, I'm not sure which trails it was also in that 12,000. Was that the River Park Trail? The maintenance of that trail?
I'm not sure, that came from staff, I'll have to ask.
The other one is the, the grant reductions in the $93,500 to the crossing guards. And again, that's another one of those items, I think. Currently, are we sending any money to the, to them, or have we stopped right now?
Right, we're under no obligation to give them any money, and we haven't given them any money.
So, with the continuing resolutions that we moved, that we did in the past, that would have?
No.
And again, my suggestion would be that if that is the wish of the council to do that, that we, you know, agendize it into a staff report, that we come back and meet with other people at the table, and don't just slice and dice it here tonight. I know it's a significant amount of money. I don't know when it, when it first started happening, and when the city felt that they had a level of obligation, or whether it was grant-funded originally, or how it even came about. I think it would be interesting to find on that. In my recommendation, coming, coming up with the library, I appreciate you bringing a little more solid number for us to work with, and I can, and I can agree with that. I don't believe there's any intention of the people up here, or consensus that said we wanted less hours of operation. But there is another chunk of money that I believe we did talk about, but we didn't necessarily put in there, and that was something that has been talked about for several months, and that is the tax measures. And that money wasn't brought forward until last meeting. We finally found out what that number was. It's approximately $200,000 for the consultant and the filing fee with the county, if I remember correctly.
Right.
So, there's, there's $200,000 that potentially, if we're not deciding to putting on a, on a tax initiative forward, we could put that money back in here as well. Maybe we could give the crossing guards some money back until we bring it forward as an agendized item to either continue it or phase it out over, over a timeframe, let the group, school district, or whoever it is, needs to come up with the money, whatever is decided at that time. But I think that would be something that we could, you know, that, another number. We also had one that was the, yeah, I think you'd brought it up to me, to my attention, was, there was a savings, the North County Rape Crisis had a reduced admin billing of $4,800.
Right, 48?
48, 45?
Right.
That was on the paper that you came forward on July 12th.
Right, but it's already been netted out, up.
Is that in here?
Where it shows the $99,000 on the list.
Okay.
That's the net number after they've removed the $4,800, yes.
All right, so, well, I'll see if anybody else has any other question.
Councilmember Osborne.
Given we're in discussion regarding a cannabis ordinance and a potential tax measure there, I don't think we should be touching anything that's been set aside for potential pulling and filing for ballot measures.
And just to comment, since both of you brought that up, our intent was to bring that forward to the next, probably a couple of meetings out to have you consider that. And certainly, if, if there's support, we'll need that money. If there's not support, if you choose as a body to not go that route, then that $200,000 does revert back and just goes to either the bottom line of the net general fund contribution. So, the 37 there or the 25 would become 237 or 225, and then from there, you can certainly make other decisions if you wanted to on, like if you wanted to restore money going to the, to the school district or whatever other purpose you'd have.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Realizing that the budget is fluid, and I know that $37,000 is not all that's hanging in there, but I have a couple of questions with this resolution. Later, when we do this budget, last time I asked for reviews, we never got the solid budget review. I think we're at a point where we need to, if we pass this budget tonight, the one thing that I would really like to ask is that in March, future council item, we have a special meeting where we go back through this entire budget again and look. I think it's to keep everybody online with what's happening. At that point, I think it would be very interesting to look at the expenditures that we're taking from our enterprise funds at that time. I'm looking at Section 3 Cost Allocation Plan. This is a very complex document. How much money are we shifting around in City Hall with that? Section 4 of the resolution, the rate structure for water, wastewater, and solid waste utilities, the requirements of property related to, property-related fees. So, we're back to the enterprise reimbursement here, legal, defensible, what have we. The other part of the item, or the resolution is Section 7 with transfers to the general fund from the electric fund. I think that we should, you know, and then transfers from general, to the general fund from water, wastewater, and solid waste will continue to be based on cost of service methodology. Something else that we would probably want to look at very hard in March to see, but I mean, we have money that we're going to bring in, we just don't know where it is. It's not listed in the budget as an expense in the enterprise, nor is it listed as a gain that's easy to find in the budget.
Did you have a comment on that, or no? Okay, any other thing? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment.
My name is Deb Andrews, Mission Hills area of Lompoc. I was dismayed at the tone of an opinion hit piece in the I was dismayed at the tone of an opinion hit piece in the Sunday Lompoc record regarding city budget deliberations. We are fortunate to have some of our elected officials fight for Lompoc and its citizens respectfully yet assertively. Never be silenced. From 2012 to 2016, the Lompoc General Fund budget increased substantially along with staff salaries, while the Lompoc population has remained the same. What measures were employed to justify a 55% pay increase for the economic director slash assistant city administrator? The obvious neglect of parks and streetscapes suggest local government expansion has been self-serving with low regard for citizen services. When a council member along with the city manager promoted, promoted the union agenda, the script they parrot is eerily similar to what I have witnessed in other locales. As the recipient of a cease and desist letter sent by certified mail threatening me and ordering me to stop telling the truth about public schools, I can attest the union boot is firmly planted on the throat of government and education. The enforcers for those who refuse to be silenced are unscrupulous criminal thugs, expert in harassment, intimidation, character assassination, thuggery and violence. They don't all wear black or masks, but the goal is the same. Comply or be silenced. The compliant are rewarded. I applaud and hold in high regard those of you who have stood your ground on our behalf. Never back down. I urge you to re-adopt the 2013-2015 budget. Those staff responsible to manage personnel and finances would then be encouraged to adopt a new script with a different title for the citizens of Lompoc and toss the old one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Good evening again, Anne Rougey, resident of Lompoc. I'm confused about what you're going to do with the library budget. You know, you were going to cut $208,000 from our budget or take us back to, I believe, 1315 budget, and, and we did try to explain several times that this is going to cost closure of the library and also some loss of our wonderful, wonderful staff. So I'd like a clarification on who are on your line item that, that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Lynn Lompoc resident and chairman of the foundation at the time that the Barkin Park was created and chairman today. So there was a question about what was agreed to. It is correct, there was no MOU done at the time. That wasn't how things were done back then. The agreement was that the foundation committee would raise the money and build the park and would maintain the physical structures, and the city would provide water and mow the grass. And that's what's gone on from then till now. The annual budget of that committee is about $1,000, so clearly they're not going to come up with six grand to run the park. So your decision here this evening is quite simple. If you want to close the park, then eliminate the $6,000 and that'll be that. The other thing I want to bring to your attention, and I was concerned about the $750,000 that you guys took out for the demolition of the pool, and don't misunderstand, I clearly support your decision, but I was concerned about how the money came to us and what strings were attached. So I went back and I looked at the documents from Bank of America when, that you approved for that lease purchase. And what I found out, and I guess I hadn't read it from all 39 pages before, was that in fact, it had nothing to do with the pool because that was going to be too complicated. And what the city did was borrow $750,000 against city equipment that was involved in other leases with Bank of America. So basically, you created a $750,000 loan for cash flow going forward, and you're using that to balance this budget. So you have a structural deficit in this budget of $750,000 that a future, that future councils are going to have to pay for. Now, in business, I can't operate that way. I can't borrow today and continue to operate and hope it's going to get better. I'm compelled, as a business owner, to reduce my costs to match my income stream. So from my perspective, you guys are $750,000 short of a balanced budget. You've, as Mr. Hohm doll is proud of saying, you've kicked that can down the road. So there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Before, go ahead. Mr. Wyman, just because there are some people from the library again, just go over again the library financing.
Right, we had, with what's proposed currently in what I presented to you tonight, still has some reduction from what was originally allocated. It just, instead of have there being a $207,000 cut, there's about a $103,000 cut. And those cuts are based upon things like the voluntary furlough we have, you know, in, in weighing people out and other, other cuts that we were able to make internal to the operations that were not going to impact customer service, so we're not going to reduce the hours. But with, at the $207,000 level, that was the only solution we were finding was we were going to have to shave the, the half day of service that we have and shave that off and lay off three part-time positions. So with what's proposed now, we won't have any layoff, we won't have any reduction in services out there, and the amount of money that there are cuts are due to things like voluntary furloughs and other vol, and other internal cuts that we're able to make.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to thank staff and both the council for all the hard work on the budget, on these budget meetings. I think there's been 12, 13 budget meetings now. My point is to all the people out there, this is to the, about the council, how dare us ask the questions of staff on budgetary issues, okay? We've already seen what happens here. If, if we don't ask questions, things happen, and then people say, wow, what happened? I think it's absolutely within our power and our direction to actually do what we're supposed to be, be a representative government of the people. There are people in politics that all they do is subscribe to what City Hall wants and the city, city workers. I would like to say, I'm a representative of all the people in, in, in the city of Lompoc, including City Hall, the union people and all the workers. And it seems that most people, they take the path of least resistance, always saying, hey, why don't we agree with staff? They're the professionals. We're a representative government for a reason, to ask these questions in case there needed to be a clarification. It's not that the city staff is trying to mislead us, it's just that we also have a different direction from which we can actually pull from more ideas. Mr. Mosby, I think, has, has pointed out that there are a couple of other ways to do it. People are appalled that we have another way to do this. But it's actually because we're a representative government for the people so that we can know that you had a voice in this decision-making process. I don't believe that everything Councilman Mosby proposed was, was met with open arms. I think that he met quite a bit of resistance, and, and I do have an issue with that. I think partially as us as a representative government, we're finding resistance from city staff, which turns into what I think is sometimes, turns into political. It's a political view of what we should do and, and how dare us, okay? I think that also, I think that we should applaud these people that are doing the extra work on both the city side and the union side to say, hey, we're not over here just playing around here. These are a lot of meetings. We're not just agendizing meetings just to come up here and talk. I think we're actually looking for a better solution, if there is one, maybe there isn't. But at least we dug a little deeper and read between the lines so that every one of us can have a better life. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby?
I just wanted to fill in on, on the library. That's a decrease in the increase of the budget. It, it made it sound like we were cutting, so it's actually $100,000 more than the previous budget cycle.
Right. When, when I'm using the word cut, I'm just saying cut from what was in this draft budget.
That way, I think that would help to understand. So it's actually $100,000 more, $103,000 more.
You are correct.
Right. Again, there was a statement made earlier about the capital improvement plan. So are we approving, if we approve the budget in, in this resolution here, are we approving this capital improvement plan that's written here?
You cert, you certainly can if, if you'd want to. We are going to be bringing back a finalization of that that shows the things we've shifted out of current year and moved into future years. Also, just for the record, for instance, there's a lot of things having to do, we've gone over a lot of other things with fleet and staff. Staff has been doing that. We've got some additional cuts that we're, we haven't brought to you yet only because we haven't made the rounds with all of the department heads, at least we hadn't as of Friday. And I want to make sure I got sign off, operational sign off from everyone. But we had cuts in every area of our, of how we allocate fleet, but for one, and that's in wastewater where we actually need a little bit of an increase. But we would be presenting all of that to you with our final form of this budget if you choose to adopt it that way. If you want to adopt it separately, you can, we can bring that back and you can.
My, my recommendation is, is we haven't really dug into the, this, this book in itself. I mean, there's, there's a whole lot in here. We haven't had time on that, but the, likewise, I believe you were referencing that the, the pages, page 196 to page 208, that's where it had the.
Right.
Those numbers. My recommendation, we bring those back as well when we're bringing, and I know that there's a number of items like the, another water well, I guess, has been decided not to, and several other things. So truing that up separately, I think would be, would be important. And I don't know if I need to make a motion on that now, so we can just get that out of the way that we, we take this stuff. We haven't had a chance to, to go through that, to really, to really dig into all the capital improvement book.
In, in my opinion, I think you'd make that a council request at the end of the meeting. I mean, would that be appropriate, Mr. Wyman?
I think either way.
Well, maybe I'll make the motion right now so we can get that off the table, that we bring this back, city manager brings this back at, at a future time for approval. So I'll make that as a motion if I get a.
Could you restate your motion? I'm sorry.
To bring back the draft capital improvement program as well as page 196 to 203, two, yeah, 203, the attachments that are on the internet but aren't in our book.
Those pages, 196 to 203, of what?
Of the biennial budget, the draft budget. To bring those back at a future time for the approval, or discussion for approval.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think it's absolutely imperative that the council gets a, a look at the capital improvement plan. As mentioned earlier, whatever is in the capital improvement plan is going to represent the fees new development is going to pay. Big projects, big fees, and we're sharing those as citizens with the small sliver that the impact fee does. So to keep control of what your dreams are is to control your impact fees. So I absolutely, I'll give you a second.
Okay, and we need a third then?
I'll give you a third.
Okay.
Okay, so getting, getting that off the table, the, understanding that some of the level of methodology we're using in here, and I can understand the cost allocation book, because we have, we have two, the enterprise reimbursement and the cost allocation are both in here. In the cost allocation book, we, we saw pretty hard in front of us. The enterprise reimbursement is another aspect of it. It's, that's about 50% of the $21 million is coming out of the enterprises, back to the general fund. And I know Councilmember Starbuck and myself were on an ad hoc committee and had documentation that we're going to bring forward in April, but we were advised that the right-of-way maintenance that we had discussed, it was decided that we couldn't use. So that's why that document and the budget came out in May, so that kind of put a lot of that on hold. But there is some language in here, and I did talk with the city attorney about it today in Section 7.
I'm sorry, in the resolution?
In the resolution, yes. That states that the transferred have been considered in light of and are consistent with. Now, the consistent with, where, is that the city attorney stating that it's consistent with, or is that the council agreeing that it's consistent with? Because it's like we're approving the enterprise reimbursement methodology, yet we haven't approved the, the enterprise reimbursement.
It is consistent, it's your determination, it's your statement, because you're adopting this, even though we've written it.
Well, right, and that's what I'm getting down to.
Your statement that it is consistent, and it's our, our certification to you that also we built a budget that was consistent with that. So going forward, if, if, in, in your upcoming and future and continued review, either from the ad hoc or eventually from the council itself, if you have any changes to make whatsoever, you're certainly able to do that. You consider, consider that at any time, and to the extent there are impacts to the budget, we'll have to address those at that time as well. But I'm saying this to say it's possible for you tonight to adopt the draft budget as we've formulated it here, perhaps with some of the minor adjustments, if you wanted to take the park, you know, park maintenance and the like off or whatever. Still have a balance, and it's relying on the cost reimbursement studies and the like. We did have that, that, the, both the, the appropriateness of it and the legality of it confirmed first by HFH, the, the conducted, the consulting firm that conducted the study, and then reiterated by Michael Collantinos, is that his, Collantinos' firm, as to the legal appropriateness. So we're representing to you that the, the cost reimbursement study is an appropriate thing for us to then have dependence of our, our budget on that. We need to have, our, our budget needs to be dependent upon that. So what I would say is if you'd go ahead and with, with that understanding, adopt the resolution, we would then, at any future time, any step along the way, be able to make those adjustments as you wish.
And that, and that was the thing I was getting at, making sure that while we're through approval of this resolution, we weren't approving the full methodology of the enterprise reimbursement, but we're stating it to be consistent with.
Yeah. We, we have to show some methodology on which we're relying, and that's the methodology, and those are the numbers. But the numbers are pliable based upon, it's, it's up to you to adopt it, and if you wish to amend, and you'd be able to amend it anytime.
You said enough to verify that we can bring it back for amending down, which is, you answered my question there. I had just a couple other questions I wanted to bring forward. And it's been stated that PERS came in and hit us as a big obligation, and I understand that the unfunded liability is a significant reason why we're, we're doing what we're doing. But there's also, we did give out some significant raises this, this last year, and I don't know if Mr. Albro wasn't in, and I'd asked Mr. Wilkie today, and I don't know if he got those numbers.
He'd, he'd, yeah, he had shared them with me, so I.
Because I think it's, it's important.
I see him looking around for them, but I know he's got them.
I think it's important to understand as well that we are and have been doing a lot of heavy work and heavy lifting to get where we are right now. And it's not saying that the raises that weren't negotiated aren't deserving, but I want the people to understand that we have been able to do this, and we are, I believe, getting through this, so I don't know if Mr. Wilkie can.
Yeah, went through the MOUs that were approved during the last two-year periods, and the. and the MEU agreements that affected the general fund is approximately $1.1 million for the 17, 19 year over what was adopted as part of the 15, 17 budget.
Yeah, so we have done some other heavy lifting as well in there. We've kind of, I want to make sure that the people know that we are taken care of. The community is also knowing, the council know that we, there's a $1.1 million expense that we did in raises. That's just the general fund. And I think the others, do you have the other ones that aren't, that are outside the general fund?
No, I don't. But the bargaining groups that are outside the general fund, which are non-safety, the terms that they agreed to was a fairly modest $125 a month for each of the two years, more than what they were receiving in the 15, 17 cycle, basically to cover the increases in medical costs.
No, right.
So from a perspective of a percentage, that's probably, even at the 250 effective on July 1st of 2018, across the board is probably less than a percent for that group because there's no, it's just a flat dollar amount. So it doesn't depend on anybody's salaries, it's just, so it's just a flat number. We have 189 people, I think, that are in that group, so 189 times 250 times 12 months, it's just a math number. I don't have it in front of me, but it's pretty reasonable.
Right. And I'm not going, I just wanted to get that out to let people know that we are also, we're moving forward as well. It's not a gloom and doom aspect, I mean, and so there are other areas going out. There was another, well, again, Mr. Albro's not here, but, and that was question number seven on the 26 pages, and he was going to give me the homework that came with those numbers, and that was the upper management raises?
Yeah, I apologize. He had to leave the state and has to go back, so...
And, you know, and as a homework assignment, I had gone out and I had done, granted, I went where I was told to go, and that was to the Transparent California. We know there's some issues and this and that. And likewise, too, if we see some issues here, we should maybe call them up and get them to correct them as well. But what I did is I compiled 2013, 2014, 2015, and 2016, because one of the, in the answering of the question, it only went to June of 2014, so it had six months short. And I believe it went to June of 16, so it was six months short. So there was a, it was a much narrower window that was looked at. And the number I have to look at is the Transparent California. But in not counting the city manager's position, because that one changed different from administrator to manager, and there were some other things that went through there, but we, the top seven that were in that list, according to my math and my calculations here, ended up to be about $156,000 more than if they were IBW. So my homework and stuff showed a little different, and I just passed that out for anybody who wants to see him as well. And again, referencing not whether they're deserving or not, there's two pages each. Just that we have been trying to make up for some lost ground in several of our positions, but I think it's, and again, if there's a miscalculation on Transparent California, I did talk to a couple of people on there, and they said, oh, they're pretty close. But did put the compilation together, showing that we are moving forward, and it's not a gloom and doom that we're not, you know, giving raises, which is important to keep quality personnel as well and let it go out there for the public that, you know, we're still open for business. But in that, I'd like to go back and also make a motion. I know councilmember Osborne didn't want to take the tax money off, and that's, but I believe that's another conversation about with the marijuana and the ad hoc. We don't even know if we're going to put that on or what it's going to cost to go through. But likewise, the $200,000 that has been set aside in this budget is for a tax measure that's currently was planned to put forward on this. And, you know, I'll make a motion that we put that $200,000 back in here to be part of the calculation. And I'll add, by doing that, it would give us the $93,500 back to the grants for crossing guards, and the $12,200 back for park maintenance reduction transfer. That would mean we would continue to maintain the trails, and I believe it's the River Park Trail, and as well as the Barkin Park mowing and maintenance, which I believe would still give us $100,000 on top of that. So that would put us approximately $137,000 in the positive on, approximately 130? Are you doing some math, city manager?
I'm sorry, no, yes, I agree with your math. I was just, I'm just making notes.
Approximately.
Right. The, what you had suggested, 93.5 and the 12.2, put them together, it's 105.7. So if you pulled the 200,000 out, then you've got a positive, you're increasing your net about by about 95,000.
So I'll make, I make a motion to put that and that and, and adopt the resolution 6135, for instance, he's 17.
I just have one quick question. To put an item on a ballot is, how much is that city clerk, roughly 18, 20-some thousand dollars?
Yes. It's very broad. It's extremely broad. It depends on how many ballot measures we may or may not put on there, how large the information that is on the ballot, how many words essentially. And it also depends on how many other agencies or municipalities put on ballot measures as well.
Okay, so understanding, so there would still be money left...
The what?
To put a ballot measure on if the desire is there.
Crossing guard and that.
True statement.
I could not guess.
Well, I mean, based on these numbers, there was 95,000, did I hear that correct? It would...
When I spoke to the county elections office, they gave me an estimate between 10 to $12,000, up to $90,000.
So we could restore these services and still have enough money to put a ballot measure on? I'm trying to run a compromise here.
But that doesn't include the elections cost either. That's up above.
We had set aside a total of 200,000, which was both the cost of putting, having items on the ballot, and was also doing a public education. You generally have to do both.
And giving the number, what I had, just doing the math, had put us at $131,300 in the kitty.
Correct.
Available for that if we chose to go there.
Which, are you talking about a tax measure or the...
Well, to put a tax measure on the ballot if...
Okay, you'd have a 131.3, so...
Left, but we would, in turn, like you had just said, we would restore crossing guards and, what were the other services here?
It would be on page...
The $12,200 for the parts.
Page 303, the top of page 303, the 12,000...
Park maintenance.
Reductions and transfers.
And so we'd be increasing the finalized net fund contribution by 94,300, which gets to Mr. Mosby's grand total of 131,341.
And again, not as part of my motion, but I believe it, working forward as the suggestions I had made, if the cross, if so, you want to bring a staff report with the crossing guards, and likewise with the foundation and such as well. I mean, if those are items that you wanted to move forward with down the road. But I mean, that's not part of my motion, but that was part of the discussion earlier. So...
I guess one of the things, if I wanted to add to councilmember Mosby's motion, would I have to vote against his first one?
You could ask him to amend it.
Yeah, I think it's still fluid right now, so he's got a motion, but he may like to hear what you have to say.
Okay, because I was going to go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution to include a March budget review that would include the enterprise funds to general fund transfer, including cost allocation plan and the current enterprise reimbursements.
And you're talking about doing that in March, but would it be for effective the December 31 numbers or...
As close as we can.
Okay.
Would that be all right?
I would accept the amendment.
I'll second.
So do you want to restate the motion now?
I need to know where the money is being removed from. That's...
The $200,000, I think the city manager can help.
I can, I can help you out with that.
I believe that was out of the economic vision.
Yeah, we're removing, so taking off of the list that we had, we're removing from the list of deletions. We are removing now 12,200 for the park maintenance, and the grant reduction of 93,500. But we're adding to the list of deletions $200,000 for ballot measures.
From ballot measures.
Right. Thanks.
And that gives a total of...
So that leaves, so we'll have then a finalized, with the line item that says finalized budget net general fund contribution, we'll read positive $131,341.
Mr. Mosby, anything else?
Are you good with that?
I seconded it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, discussion. My only comment is that I believe we're being shortsighted in this because this 200-some thousand dollars is one-time money. We're going to get the, get these things addressed for this year, next year, and we're going to be right back in the same spot as we are two years of the next budget. So that's what I mean by we're being shortsighted on this. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Let's vote. That passes 3-2. Okay. Written communications.
Nothing more than you've already received.
Okay. Oral communications, it's your opportunity to speak to us for up to two minutes, any I see someone very happy back there, so don't you want to, there you go, okay. Okay, council requests, comments, and meeting reports. Councilmember Mosby.
I attended, as a representative for Lompoc at the APCD and SB CAG meeting last month, I also wanted to make a council request. I did ask the city attorney earlier tonight for a question, and I would ask for an emergency meeting for, to come back within 48 hours for possible disciplinary action or termination of the city manager. And I would need a...
Okay, you need two council members to agree with you for an emergency meeting. I'll give him a second. Okay, without a third, that fails. Okay. Anything else, Councilmember Mosby?
That's it.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Is there any status on our reply letter for SB 35? League of Cities asked.
We have reviewed it, we've prepared a draft, but the timing of it isn't as critical because it's been delayed, the bill's been delayed. So we are putting together a letter that says, "Don't do it," but the timing for having to do it isn't as critical as it was.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Councilmember Starbuck, or Councilmember Vega.
I'd also like to make a motion, again, to a second motion, for a personnel review of the city manager for disciplinary action and possible termination. I'd like to try again, see what we can have here. I think it's just for a review. Would like some support on that one.
Give you a second.
It's not a hurt to have a review.
We've had two reviews in the last six months, but if you get a third...
Well, I have a different motion. I would appreciate a little bit more support on this one.
Yeah, you know, could you make this at the 19th meeting? The motion?
We can. Okay, it sounds like you don't have a third for tonight. Anything else, Councilmember Vega?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask, just so that I'm clear, what's going to happen on the 19th? The idea, a potential request for the council to put on a future agenda, something regarding the city manager?
I believe the request from Councilmember Starbuck was that Councilmember Vega make his motion on the meeting on the 19th, so there's no action at this point. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Osborne.
I attended the C3H United Way America Core graduation, representing the city of Lompoc, and I also was happy to meet Hannah Beth Jackson here on Sunday when she brought a proclamation to the Noah Scott family that she procured at the end of the Senate's session. And that was very, very moving and very important that that was brought forward and recognized not only Noah's sacrifice, but his family's commitment to our community. So I just wanted to say thank you to Senator Hannah Beth Jackson for doing that. I do have two council requests. One, I would like to bring back one of the issues we put as a priority to us now that we actually have a budget in place where we talked about adapting some of the city hall hours to provide later hours on some specific days for public utility payments, being able to do business, potentially meet. So I'd like support on that evaluation being done so that maybe we could put that in place. That would be an easy adaptation, if I could get support on that.
We need a second and a third. I'll give you a second.
You just wanted to bring it up for discussion?
Mm-hmm.
No, I'll give you a second with that.
The other issue that I would love to have us come back is something that as SoCal Gas has been opening up the road and laying new infrastructure, I'd like us to consider a dig-once policy. So I'd like to have staff review and bring back a dig-once policy, not just to have conversation with outside entities when the road has been opened up for new infrastructure. We would send out a notice to others that are looking to upgrade infrastructure, both outside entities, but also inside between departments, so that we reduce the nature of tearing up the road all the time. I know that, I've already seen three times that Central has been opened up already this year, and it's three different times. And if we have a dig-once policy, then we reduce that, and we also provide incentive to others to participate and put new infrastructure in as others are opening up that right away.
If I could respond to that, we do have a five-year project coordination map that the utility departments run it through. Let's see the utility director here, but you might check in to see if that is able or if they coordinate already with outside agencies. But we do have one that they do a five-year advancement, and they look when they're anticipating. So it might see that that's already being fulfilled. I don't know. I don't know if the city manager knows. Is the five-year project coordination map, if that also works outside, with outside groups or just with our local enterprises?
I don't know how extensive it is that we work out outside, so I'd have to...
It might be good for discussion, having, bring it forward so everybody knows what it is. I give you a second with it.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll give you a third. It's supposed to be an update on a January... and July, perhaps.
Thank you.
Anything else?
You know, normally I don't do this, but there is a level of professionalism that we're expected to bring to this when we're elected, and the current behavior from council has been abhorrent, I've been embarrassed numerous times when I have been visiting out of our community, representing it, I don't mind us asking the difficult questions, I don't mind having hard discussions, but when we impugn individuals, when we attack personalities, when we're disappointed with them because we don't agree with them, we're behaving badly, and we are the first representation of our community, we are sitting up here being recorded, you want to know why industry and businesses and homes might not be built here, is we're a full-service city, they sit and watch these council meetings, and they watch our behavior, so we don't just represent the community, we represent our behavior and what might be expected at City Hall, so I would implore my fellow council members to think about professional behavior, and what that means, and what that reflects on you, and how it reflects on our community, so I'm disappointed in recent behaviors, and I'm disappointed in recent headlines, and I'm disappointed in some of the personalities that have been revealed, and that's all, I just wanted to share that I'm disappointed, and I look to bring a level of professionalism that I'd like to see the rest of council step up to.
Thank you, I have, let's see, attended several meetings, one meeting was at a city expense, I went to an NCPA meeting in Roseville, I was there August 23rd, returned on August 24th, I, the city did provide mileage, I drove my own vehicle, and they provided one night in a hotel, good news that, that meeting, those of you that realize Northern California Power Agency is a part, we are one of 15 cities involved in it, and we generate our own electricity, and about 70, about 70% of the energy we use here is, it's green energy that we produce up in Northern California with the geysers, hydroelectric plants, hydroelectric plants, geysers, and geothermal, all green energy, renewable energy, a couple of years ago, we were involved in the project in Lowdi, where along with the other 15 cities, other 14 cities, we built almost a $400 million rapid start, it's natural gas, rapid start, and then it's fueled by a steam turbine thereafter, so that, the rest of it is all green, we had to almost, pretty much shut that $400 million plant down, except for rare emergencies over the past six months because of, all of a sudden, the spike in natural gas prices, went from 30 cents a gallon, or to over $2 a gallon, and it just became non-economical for us to run it, our general manager at Northern California Power sat down with the professionals, the company of the gas company, and was able to negotiate a new contract for us, and a reduction of about 75%, so now we are able to start using our 3 and 400 million dollar plant again, which is good, you know, for the, especially days like these last couple of days, where throughout California we've had temperatures in the triple digits, yeah, air conditioners, which we don't have any here, but air conditions throughout the state of California, what we need is that supplemental energy, because we don't, we don't get enough from our on-roof solar, from our wind generators, from the turbines, we have to all of a sudden kick in this steam turbine to give us additional energy during the day, and it's working fine right now, and like I say, they're able to reduce, negotiate a new price of about 70% less, so they did a great job for our city and the other 15 cities. The other meeting I attended just this last Friday was a, we have a quarterly mayors and city managers meeting, where the local mayors and city managers from the Santa Barbara County, we get together, and we did that in solving this year, and we discussed a number of issues, the district elections, which we're all gonna be going through pretty soon, and the other thing we discussed heavily was PERS, we feel it here, the additional money that we're gonna have to pay for the, the PERS unfunded mandate, or unfunded liabilities, but every other city is facing the same thing, so we're gonna be getting together with all the other cities in Santa Barbara County, to see if we can come up with something that will help us all, so, it was an interesting meeting. With that, unless there's something else to be said, this meeting is adjourned, we'll adjourn to our regular city council meeting on September 19th, 6:30 PM, thank you, good night.[1433.97]